Council members, we're going to begin in a minute. If you haven't signed up to speak, do so now, please. All right, everybody, council members, if you could take your seat, please. We are about to begin our meeting. Before we start, we have a couple quick public service announcements. For an emergency, please note the exits on either side of the chambers and proceed down the stairs. Bathrooms are located out the door to my left. The women's room is to the right, men's room to the left. We allow 30 minutes for public speaking. If you have not done so, please sign up at the podium or by raising your Zoom hand if you're joining us virtually. Excuse me. Please note that the council has rules of decorum for our meetings, including the public speaking portion. We ask that respect be shown to all, whether they serve on the council, on the staff, or here as public members. As noted on the signage, when you entered, we do not allow weapons of any sort, signs mounted on wood, metal, or similar material, or signs larger than 19 by 24. This will help guarantee that we follow the open meeting law, so if you have signs, please don't raise them up, otherwise the people behind you cannot see. Not only are we here tonight to listen to the voices of the public, but we are also here to run government proceedings to best serve us all. We cannot have any distractions. When a speaker is addressing the council, no disruptions are permitted. This includes talking over, yelling, and clapping, because then we can't hear the voices. When this body proceeds with the day's business, we also need to have no disruptions. As per Open Meeting Law, Section 103, interruption of a speaker or government proceedings will not be tolerated. After one warning, anyone interrupting a speaker or the proceedings of today's meeting will be asked to leave chambers. I am now calling this Common Council meeting to order at 7:45 PM on June 4, 2024. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. May I please have roll call?
Alderman Pastie.
Here.
Alderman Tierney.
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress.
Here.
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Mickens.
Here.
Alderman Dennison.
Here.
Alderman Andrews. Alderman Shabbat.
Here.
Alderman Hirsch.
Here.
We have a quorum. Can I have a motion dispensed for the minutes of the previous meeting? And approve same motion by Rennie Scott Childress, second by Steve Shabbat, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is adopted nine to zero. Can I have a motion dispensed for the reading of the general bills? Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, second by Michelle Hirsch, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is adopted nine to zero. As council members, we get the opportunity to meet folks from throughout the city and from all walks of life. Throughout our service on the council, we meet community members who generally move us with their kindness and efforts to improve our community. Tonight, we recognize and honor an organization that has gone above and beyond to serve and help others with the Common Council Community Award. We are delighted to present Friends of Forsyth with the award this month. They were selected by Alderwoman Sarah Pastie, who I invite to make a short speech, or long speech, if you would like.
I'll keep it short. So, as our president of the council just explained, a different ward representative is invited each month to present a community award to recognize the outstanding service of people in our wards in Kingston. At this time, I wanted to recognize the Friends of Forsyth Nature Center as it enters its 22nd year of assisting with the many improvements at the nature center's facility. The role of the Friends group is dramatically different now than it was 20 years ago, when it was trying to facilitate and to rejuvenate a facility completely. Since its founding, the Friends group has raised roughly $250,000 to help support a variety of projects, including infrastructure projects such as the permeable paver walkway, as well as visitor experience projects, new picnic tables, an exzebo, activity panels in the children's labyrinth, and completely new exhibits and educational signage. The Friends group also supports the center's educational programs, such as scholarships to attend the Park and Recreation Junior Naturalist Summer Camp, as well as the annual Fall Festival in the park and other free events, like the Family Fun Day. Group also partners with other organizations that hold family events in Forsyth Park and with the Parks and Recreation Department to host elementary school visits. These days, the Forsyth Nature Center receives approximately 70,000 visitors each year, including both residents and visitors. Because Forsyth Nature Center is celebrating its 87th birthday on June 7, Friends of Forsyth -- I can't say that word -- Friends of Forsyth Nature Center asked me to present them with their certificate at their birthday event, so the people most directly involved in making things happen can attend the presentation. So I will be doing that, but I encourage everyone here to go, and everyone who's watching online, to visit the Forsyth Nature Center and take advantage of the many offerings that the center makes available to us. Thank you very much, and thank you to the Forsyth Nature Center for all that they do.
Thank you, Sarah, well-deserved award. We're now entering into the public speaking portion of the meeting. We have allotted 30 minutes for this purpose. Speakers will have three minutes. Please be aware that I will give a verbal 30-second warning, as well as the count on the clock. If there are remaining speakers after 30 minutes, I will call for a motion from the council to extend the period for another 30 minutes. Speakers, direct your comments to the chair, as council members cannot engage in debate during this time. Please state your name and address on the record before you begin. There could be no distractions from the audience in chambers or on Zoom when a speaker addresses the council. The Common Council has also received written comments for our consideration, and they could be found on the city's website under tonight's agenda. We did have a few speakers sign up ahead of time, so we will start there and then start with the sign up that we had here. So first speaker, please.
Paul Tobin.
The microphone may not be on, so there should be a button. If council member could go out quickly, Michael, maybe, can you?
Okay.
And if everybody could speak right into the microphone when they're up there, so that we could hear you best. Thank you.
All right, so I came here at the invitation of my niece, Jeanne Edwards, the first Native American woman to serve in a Kingston government since its founding. I wanted to speak about the money that may be going for destructive purposes, when we need money to support Native Americans here in this country, who don't have water, who don't have heating, who don't have, you know, proper living places. So I would like to see the money diverted that's going to the war machine, to the original people here. And the other thing I'd like to bring attention to is that, at the summer solstice, we planted a peace tree out on the side of the building there. That's a really long story and would take a couple hours and would exceed my three minutes. But anyway, we have developed a relationship with the city of Kingston and the County of Ulster, and we continue to do that. So I think that peace is the way to go, love is the way to go, respecting each other is the way to go, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Evan Pritchard.
Well, I'm Evan Pritchard, and I second the motion, whatever that Paul Tobin said. However, also want to add that although there has never been a Native American representative here, before Ulster County, there was a Sungsqua named Mama Nukwe, who was a great political leader and a peacemaker, and she was right here. She, I'm sure, walked in this area on this high hill here to get a view, and, you know, I'm still doing research on her, but she said at the outbreak of King Philip's War, they asked her, "Are you going to lead our local indigenous people into war against us?" And she didn't say no, but she said, "All people desire peace like they desire the light of early morning," and then she walked away. And so in that tradition, let's say, we look at what's going on in the world, and why wouldn't we choose peace if there is such an option? If peace is always possible, then we should always try, make the effort. So just symbolically, to take some of that money from armaments to help Native American people in New York State, at least symbolically, it's an olive leaf in saying that we desire peace the way that we desire the light of early morning, which is agreeable to everyone. So and though there has not been a Native American elected official, Mama Nukwe was a terrific leader, and she lived and died before Ulster County was created. So I thank you, and I hope you, you know, are inspired by the thought of this female leader and Native American. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Susan Higgins.
Susan left, so she's not here.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Eli Cassir.
Eli Cassir, Guilford Road, New Paltz. I'm Jewish. My children are Jewish. My grandfather David came here from Poland before World War II. All of his brothers and sisters were killed in the Holocaust. Back in 1967, I was a student. I was going to go enlist to fight for Israel in the 67 War. Subsequent to that, over the years, I've learned the truth about Israel. Israel's an apartheid state. It's an oppressor state. It's a violent state. For the last 75 years, it's been stealing land, farms, and homes from Palestinians. It's been preventing those people from living lives between the blockade, the attacks, protective edge, cast lead, all of them, thousands of Palestinians have been killed, slaughtered, starved. And today, Israel, the Zionist state of Israel, is carrying out a genocide. The slaughter, the killing, the incineration of children, babies, women, innocent men, has been going on for eight months now. It's relentless. It's with the support of our tax dollars. It could not be possible without our tax dollars. I'm here in support of this resolution. It's a small step, but it's on the right trajectory to send a message to our own legislators, as well as a message to Israel, which is in the grip of something horrible. I also want to touch on antisemitism. There's a lot of talk about antisemitism, and yes, it is on the rise, and yes, it's something very serious. My grandfather David, my deceased grandfather, used to work in a restaurant in the Bronx. He was on his way home on the bus when somebody stabbed him because he looked Jewish. As a kid, I lived in a place called Chappaqua. Jews could not live in Lawrence Farms. Jews could not join the Mount Kisco Country Club. Jews could not join the Whipperwell Country Club. That's antisemitism. The talk about antisemitism is different than criticizing Israel, is different than criticizing Zionism. There is no connection whatsoever between those criticisms and antisemitism. As a matter of fact, antisemitism is on the rise because of Israel's behavior, because of Israel's criminal genocidal behavior.
30 seconds.
Of course, antisemitism is on the rise. Not only is it because of Israel's behavior, but those people who are supporting Israel's behavior are guilty and as responsible for the rise in antisemitism. So if you want antisemitism to stop, stop supporting war criminals, stop supporting genocide, stop supporting the innocent slaughter of children and babies.
Time is up, thank you.
That's what needs to stop. Thank you. I listened very carefully to the directions, and you said that people who interrupted would be asked to leave. Are you going to ask them to leave? That's my question. Follow your instructions.
No, there cannot be any more outbursts, otherwise I will ask you to leave. While somebody is speaking, we cannot have any noise, because the council members cannot hear the speakers, and we're here to listen to you, so you cannot make noise. We can't hear over the hissing, we can't hear over the snapping or clapping, we cannot hear over the boos. You've got to be quiet for all the speakers. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Grunblatt.
Good evening. My name is Mark Grunblatt. I've been a resident of Ward 7 since 1989 and of Kingston since 1986. First, a plug for Resolutions 91 and 92, the CLG Grant for Wilbur and the Urban Arborist Program. I looked for a resolution on Gaz on the city website, didn't find it. So I'm not sure exactly what wording we're talking about, but one word has really gotten to me today, and that's genocide. To me, genocide is my family. To me, genocide is the aunts and uncles I never knew, the grandparent I never knew, and they wound up either in a shallow grave in Poland or incinerated, and I will never know. And that feels to me like genocide. And I have to say, the attack by Hamas in October more closely resembles it than the dropping of bombs. It's troubling, both are difficult. I know there are plenty of other Kingston families who have stories like mine. The incendiary language and the one-sided attacks I keep finding online trouble me, and the language I just heard here also troubles me. There is rarely an acknowledgement of the combatants and the horrors faced by one Kingston family in particular. We have a Kingston resident who is mourning the loss of his sister, his brother-in-law, and the disappearance of a niece and two grand nephews, and I worked with him. He was a teacher with me at the religious school in Temple Emmanuel. When approached, he'll tell you that what he wants is an end to violence. He'll tell you what he wants is an end to fear, and I think we need to honor that. Quick Hebrew lesson, "zedek" means justice. Perfect justice is impossible after a death. It's not going to happen. It can't. So what is left after that? I would argue that the answer is "zedakah," similar word, it's the feminine version of "zedek."
30 seconds.
It means charity. I think that is the route forward. I do not believe that denunciation leads to peace. I believe that charity does, and until you get a resolution that recognizes that, you should protect those who are continuing to suffer attack by not taking a stand
Thank you, your time is up.
and keeping Kingston out of international affairs. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Edmund Hoffmanns.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live in Accord, but Kingston's my go-to town for art, music, and shopping, and proud to be here. I'm here to speak in support of the ceasefire resolution. Antisemitism has been cheapened by any criticism of Israel's horrendous, whether you call it a genocide, a mass murder, an ethnic cleansing. When you criticize that and you're called an anti-Semite, never mind that most of the victims of Israel's war are Semitic people, Arab people also Semites. It's outrageous. There are real anti-Semites in this country. Some of the people that attacked protesters, major Trumpers, remember Trump? The guy that just had Unified Reich on one of his tweets? The guy that said the marchers in Charlottesville are some very fine people, the ones that I could go on and on about that. That is antisemitism. Ethnic cleansing, whatever you want to call it, same thing that happened on this continent when settlers from Europe decided to wipe out the Indians. They weren't called terrorists, they were called savages. And what did they do? Not only kill them with way superior military force, but starve them by killing millions of buffalo. It's history repeating itself, and you just can't really whitewash it. I, you know, support, you know, and I really love Jewish people, and probably more of my friends are Jewish than any other ethnicity. And I know a major call went out from the Jewish Federation to have bunches of people come with flags and banners, and it's to the credit of Jewish people that not so many of them are here supporting genocide. So I think that it's important, even though Kingston may not be part of, you know, the major funding, billions and billions of dollars for bombs, having good old Ulster County, good old Kingston speak up is a small but important voice to be raised on this issue. And again, antisemitism is real, but when Israel does what they're doing and then says, "Oh, if you criticize us, you're anti-Semitic," well, people that are not tuned into these issues, they're going to, that's just amping up antisemitism. Oh, well, you know, Jewish people, the coolest Jewish people are saying, "Not in our name," and I 100% support them. Vote yes for this resolution for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Please refrain from whispering, too, it does really carry. Next speaker, please.
Johnny Alua.
Hello, thank you. I'm here to let, well, thank you for allowing me to speak what I can only call an aggressive revenue campaign by state troopers. After having one ticket not parking, 25, 30 years, I've been stopped three times. I'm a safe, courteous driver to the extent that people, especially on 28, flash their lights and honk at me because I'm not going fast enough. Each instance, the trooper was belligerent, aggressive, and left me uncomfortable to leave my home because, wait, my license plate holder isn't going to be flush. Here's a ticket. The last time I got three tickets, the trooper didn't leave a statement, and one of the tickets contradicts what he said. The layout of the road contradicts the ticket. Where he was and where I was are lies. I was told I saw the whole thing. It's impossible. I've drawn up pictures, screen grabs, cited the law, and this is what I face as a citizen. And the main thing is, forget about my hurt from this and my anxiety over this, you're going to have citizens, this is on Reddit, by the way, there are threads about this, who are not going to be calm and composed like I am. I'm upset now because I've been subjected to this. One trooper, three separate times, asked me to agree with his account, and when I said, "That's like signing a false confession," grinning, he said, "We're going to have a talk." That's what's out there, and I want you to be aware of that. And now I have to send a plea to the prosecutor. I will go to court if necessary. I will file a civilian complaint against the trooper, and if need be, file a lawsuit. And I'm not the only one. This has been going on, and it's rampant. It's completely rampant. That's all I have to say. I want you to realize, not only does it become dangerous for the motorists, if they're so aggressive, I am very calm, I'm articulate, I'm polite. All I'm met with is belligerence, I'm belittled, I'm talked to like I'm a child. They don't listen, they don't consider, they don't acknowledge anything you're saying. I don't know how they're trained or what their mandate is, but motorists are at risk, and the troopers already have a dangerous job, are facing a greater risk where somebody who's not calm, and I know I don't sound that calm tonight, could lead to something. There was an incident of a trooper, the father's house mistakenly, somebody tried to burn it to the ground. Now, of course, that's wrong, shouldn't ever be done, but I could imagine the upset some people face. Thank you.
Next speaker. Sophie Howard.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Howard. I live in Ward 2 in Kingston. I'm of Jewish descent and wouldn't be here if my ancestors hadn't come here from Poland. And my wonderful Jewish grandfather lives in Andes and is one of the reasons I wanted to live in Kingston, to be closer to him as he aged. I'm here to strongly encourage you to pass a resolution for a cease, excuse me, permanent ceasefire in Palestine, and the strongest version of good cause eviction. The Common Council has the practice of passing resolutions in support of actions to be taken by other legislative bodies. For example, Resolution 157 of 2020 supported a green amendment in the New York State Constitution. Resolution 172 of 2022 supported the New York Climate Action Scoping Plan, and Resolution 88 of 2023 supported the New York State Legislature's passage and the governor's signing of good cause eviction. Although none of these legislative actions are within the voting powers of the Common Council, older people voted for resolutions in support of them because of their impact on the residents of Kingston. The same is true for the residents of Kingston who don't want their tax dollars to fund the bombing of Palestine. The Common Council and other municipal legislative bodies are key in urging the state and federal government to respond to the will of the people in our cities and towns. I'm devastated and angered that my tax dollars are going towards the killing of Palestinian citizens. I hope to believe that you share my concern. I'm looking for you to help urge those representing the people of New York and the United States to take action and end our support of a genocide. I recently moved to Kingston for multiple reasons, but impart a new job, paying 50% more than my place in Western Massachusetts, two hours away from here. But I was excited to make a home in such a wonderful place, only to lose that role eight months later due to mass layoffs. I know I'm not the only person in this position nowadays. I would like to continue to look for work in Kingston, but fear being priced out. I feel scared, but can only imagine what this experience is like for residents with for residents without savings. As we know, this is the way many people live these days. Pushing the working class out of town with unnecessary rent increases and a lack of renter protections not only makes Kingston a less welcoming community, it impacts our planet by increasing commute times. In order for Kingston to continue to thrive, we need to be able to house every worker needed to make the city run, including nonprofit workers, our city employees, our bartenders, and our healthcare workers. Voting for a ceasefire and the strongest version of good cause eviction supports people being able to continue their, to live in their homes.
Thank you, your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Jenna Gadstein.
Good evening. My name is Jenna Goldstein, and I live at 168 Washington Avenue in Kingston in Ward Three. I'm a tenant organizer with For the Many. I'm here tonight to thank the council for passing Good Cause Eviction Resolution through the committee. Now it is the council's turn to be one of the first counties to enact the law based on desperately need. I encourage the council to pass Good Cause, the portfolio of one, in order to protect Kingston's tenants from unfair evictions, outrageous rent increases, and retaliatory behavior. I'm also here as a Jew to implore you to pass the ceasefire resolution. I'm here tonight wearing my grandmother's chay around my neck to remind myself of Tikkun Olam, a Jewish idea which means to repair the world. We cannot repair anything with an ongoing genocide and financial support in apartheid state. This is your chance on the right side of history. Protect tenants and protect Palestine. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Sarah Sizmazia.
Hello, my name is Sarah Sizmazia, and I live on West Chestnut Street in Ward Nine. I'm here today to encourage the council to pass Good Cause Eviction. As an ETPA-protected tenant, I know the importance and the safety that Good Cause Eviction provides tenants. I urge the council to pass Good Cause Eviction with a portfolio of size one in order to protect the most tenants possible. I was disappointed to see the state of New York pass a budget that left out upstate tenants. And this is a chance for the council to add that protection back to us. I'm also here to encourage the council to pass a permanent ceasefire resolution for Palestine. Waking up every morning to videos of dead children for months straight has taken a toll on my soul. I urge the council to protect lives and pass a permanent ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Chelsea Valaba.
Chelsea Valaba, Ward One, Council. I'm once again asking you to pass a strong Good Cause eviction that protects the largest number of tenants. Alder's Hirsch and Tierney's Good Cause Bill that exempts landlords with a portfolio of one will protect more renters as Kingston continues to feel the strain of a multi-year housing crisis. Albany passed a Good Cause bill similar to Hirsch and Tierney's last night. It can be done if people believe it should be done. Protect the remaining multigenerational Kingston residents who haven't yet been gentrified out of the city by property owners who leave people houseless or housing insecure with astronomical rent increases. Additionally, Council, I once again appeal to you to pass a ceasefire resolution. Join hundreds of municipalities, including Albany, Beacon, Hudson, and Poughkeepsie, that have passed this legislation to enshrine communities' commitments to humanity. I cannot remain silent while our tax dollars, a part of every facet of our lives, are used to uphold apartheid, ethnic cleansing, and fill mass graves. The Gazan Ministry of Education has reported that over 15,000 Palestinian children have been killed since October 2023. For context, that number is more than half of the 27,000 children attending Ulster County public schools, and far larger today. I mourn for every human made to feel subhuman on these lands and abroad. I mourn for every single murdered child who paid for sins that weren't theirs on these lands and abroad. When I see something that would hurt me happen to another person, it hurts me because we are all connected, because we all belong to the earth. As social beings, rugged individualism can only get us so far. I became a social worker because I believe in community. I chose this as my career to highlight the overwhelming power of love and justice in this world over the fear that dictates too many of our policies and cultures. You became public servants because you want to serve your community, I sincerely hope. Respect the voices and time of hundreds of Kingston community members who have expressed their support for a ceasefire resolution. Respect the tenants who cannot afford for you to not pass a strong Good Cause eviction bill. Respect the seven generations after you so that they may be housed, healthy, and inherit a habitable planet. All the children are our children. When we forget that, we've forgotten our humanity. Thanks.
Next speaker, please. Nathan Pollak.
Hello, City Council members. Thank you for allowing me time to speak. I was here in the last meeting as well, so some of this may be familiar. Although I am from New Paltz, I can say with certainty that some of the same housing issues in Kingston plague New Paltz as well. I know all of you join City Council because you love this community, and that some of the best things you do here will not be known to the larger community. Adopting Good Cause eviction and including small landlords as just a portfolio of one is one of the best things you can do for this community and will be the most visible policy that you can pass. As a Jew, I am also strongly urging you to pass the ceasefire resolution. Six million Jews died in the Holocaust, including my great-grandparents, not just because of Nazi extermination, but because people around the world said, it's a global issue, not a local issue. America, in particularly, severely limited immigration of Jews, and continued to allow corporations to sell weapons and fuel to Nazi Germany up until 1940. The point being, you don't exterminate 6 million Jews, 5 million Romani, and millions of others from minority backgrounds without the complicity of billions. I ask the City Council to not be complicit in the genocide of Palestinians. The Zionists tonight will ask why the City Council does not also pass resolutions against Russia or Sudan. And the reason is simple. The United States does not arm and fund Russia or Sudan, but our tax dollars do fund Israel's genocide. As taxpayers, we gift Israel F-16 jets that drop American-made 2,000-pound bombs on refugee camps, primarily comprised of women and children. The New York State Pension Fund already holds $267 million in Israeli bonds. Our shared congressman, Pat Ryan, is often hiding in DC and extremely difficult to communicate directly with. That's why we are all here with you tonight. We need you to be our voice and pass the ceasefire resolution and put pressure on the state and federal legislators' pledges. I understand that you may be concerned about how your Zionist constituents may react if you pass a ceasefire resolution. You can just say that you do not support the arming of Israeli Prime Minister Netanyahu, who is widely despised both in America and in Israel. Every weekend, tens of thousands of Israelis call for his resignation in Tel Aviv, and the ICC is currently seeking arrest warrants against him. After this meeting, I will send each of you to your offices, links to Jewish Voice for Peace and Bet Salam, an Israeli human rights organization who have more factual information that can help you make a decision and explain it to your constituents. Thank you.
Council members, that's 30 minutes to have a motion to extend. Motion by Randy Scott Childress, second by Michelle Hirsch. All in favor? Opposed? We'll extend for another 30 minutes. And when the speakers come up, I was reminded to remind you to say your name and address for the record. Next speaker, please. Bryce Gruber.
Hi, my name is Bryce Gruber. I live in Woodstock. I see some people here who have openly and happily harassed my family for being openly Jewish, and visibly so. I may not look it. I'm not just of Jewish descent. I am a practicing Jew like the majority of Jews in this area, Kingston included. The majority of Jews in America, according to Pew Research, not just people making up numbers, are vehemently Zionist. Zionism is not a bad word. Zionism singularly means that Jews have a right to have a homeland. My family is not one of the families from Poland who is all we're hearing from, who are people who have not spent time in what they're calling an apartheid state. My family has been on that land continuously for thousands of years. They have never left. They have been there. You can go, and I have taken my children on repeated occasions to visit the graves of their great, 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 great 20 generations back, till the 1400s and the 1500s, in Sfat Israel. Now, anyone who has ever been to Israel knows there is no apartheid. And I can tell you, in my own family, everyone comes in every color under the sun. The neighbors next to my family's homes are Muslim, are Christian, are everything you can imagine. The Egyptian consulate is directly across the street from my father-in-law's house, and everybody is friends. You are hearing a very bastardized version of what is shown on maybe some major media networks. But I venture to say almost nobody in this room has ever spent a minute of their lives in the Middle East, and certainly not in Israel. Now, I am absolutely appalled that everyone who got up here and had a lot to say about apartheid and Zionist regimes and what anti-Semitism really is. And by the way, if you define anti-Semitism, you damn well better be one of the practicing Jews. Otherwise, you do not have the right to put it in your mouth. It's not okay. But I will tell you that of all of those people who were very proud and loud to speak, nobody spoke for Maurice except for one man. Maurice, who is a resident of Kingston, Maurice who lost his sister, who lost his brother-in-law, whose niece is missing, his grand nephews are missing, they are babies. They were taken at nine months and four years old. And they're still missing. And nobody here from this community, whether you speak for humanity and you speak for all the children or not, has the balls to stand up and say, but we'd like to see good for those children. I'm appalled. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Susan Mack.
Thank you for serving on the council and being here tonight. International affairs are beyond the purview of the council and beyond the charter which you have dedicated yourself to uphold and for which I am grateful. If the charter is extended to include international relations, how will the council decide when to involve itself? Will it examine each of the ceasefire resolutions that have been bilaterally rejected to date? What of US relations with Saudi Arabia, notorious for its egregious human rights violations and subsequent US responsibility for the 25 million starving Sudanese? Will the council speak to that? Given the history of US involvement in Haiti, are we giving enough aid to mitigate the terrible suffering of those individuals? The Saugardis Council has wisely recognized the extent of their mandate and fully accepted the weight of their responsibility for governing the city. For this council to dabble in complex international affairs and cherry pick causes is to set a dangerous and unacceptable precedent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Howard Weiss.
Hi, everyone. My name is Howard Weiss. I live at 53 Brewster Street here in Kingston. And I'm here to wholeheartedly support Kingston's opt-in to New York State's Good Cause eviction program. And it is essential to include the proposed Section 3 addition recommended by the Council's Laws and Rules Committee, which eliminates the portfolio-sized loophole. Too often loopholes in these laws undermine stated intentions and severely reduce their impact. Why draw a line that means a huge number of tenants will be unable to challenge an eviction when no good cause exists? In the context of our affordable housing crisis, it makes sense to protect more tenants, not fewer. Please support the opt-in language as recommended by the Laws and Rules Committee. It will make a real difference to our families, to our friends, and neighbors. I'd also like to urge the council to support the permanent ceasefire resolution. The war is total insanity. Too many people dying, way too many lives have been lost at too great a cost. We must condemn the atrocities and end American complicity. Thanks for your time.
Next speaker, please. Ed Pollan.
Okay, first of all.
Sir, can you speak into the microphone?
First of all, I don't understand what a common council over here is just interested in Israel and Gaza. I mean, what about Ukraine? What about Russia? What about all these other places are having conflicts right now? Why only Israel? Okay, so now, in 2005, the Israelis left Gaza because they thought it would promote peace, but it didn't. The Palestinians have constantly fired rockets and tried to kill as many Israelis as possible. Israel builds a wall between the both of the countries, and the Hamas digs tunnels to try to kill more Israelis. Okay, so the big thing over here is what makes this situation so terrible is that the Hamas kills Israelis and then uses the Palestinians as human shields. There's no other country in the world that would do that. They don't give a damn about their own people. The Israelis care much more about the Palestinians than Gaza does. And Gaza is controlling, I mean, the Hamas is controlling Gaza. So what are you supposed to do? And look, everybody wants a permanent peace. But what are the terms of the permanent peace? Now, so far, I just read in the internet that the Hamas and Israel is against the peace. So what are you going to do? You gotta try to find permanent peace, it would be great.
Next speaker. Howard, and it's, the last name starts with a V. Name and address, please.
Howard Vesinsky. Thank you for your attention. I came to ask you not to consider voting at all against a resolution for a ceasefire or any other resolution regarding, I don't believe this council's business is to tell, to involve itself in the foreign affairs of other countries. I think that you have enough on your plate, God knows, that you should be focusing on. And I also want to say that I'm not going to argue individual ideas about who's right and who's wrong. I'm the president of Congregation Agudis Achim in Kingston on Lucas Avenue. And if the council takes a stand for one side or another, it's going to be a very divisive position. Any stand that's officially by Any stand that's officially by the City of Kingston on a resolution like this affects every Jewish family, affects every family in Kingston, and I urge you not to make it official, regardless of what you think the merits or not the merits are of this. And I have my opinion, and I'm not going to... You know where I stand, I think. But in any case, it's not for you to make an official position. It will be divisive of the community, and especially my congregation will feel very uncomfortable if certain side is taken. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Shava Halevi.
Esteemed Council members?
Can you just move the microphone down? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Esteemed Council members. I'm here to ask you not to vote or to vote against this resolution or not to vote on it at all, the ceasefire resolution with Gaza. I think it's important to have in mind that over the past 20 years or so, when there's been no Israeli occupation of Gaza, Hamas has indiscriminately rocket bombed Israeli civilians, breaking one ceasefire agreement after another. And the attack and atrocities that Hamas committed on October 7th, of which they proudly posted evidence all over social media, unlike the Nazis who were ashamed of their crimes. This was another violation of a ceasefire that was existing at the time. Hamas then broke the November ceasefire agreement with Israel by refusing to release all the agreed-upon women, children, and baby, which has been referenced by earlier speakers, and then by resuming indiscriminate rocket attacks on Israeli civilian communities. So this is like the greater context that people refer to, that we have to remember when Hamas started the war, the current war between Israel and them and Gaza on October 7th. And I'd just like to add, I wasn't going to address this because the matter is regarding a ceasefire, but the International Court of Justice issued a report recently, the fourth report or something, and there was one member of the court, I believe she's a deputy judge... I don't know her title. I think she's from Uganda. Her name is Julie Sagutandeh. Again, I'm sorry, I don't have that correct information. She, in her dissenting opinion, she wrote, "There is no evidence of genocide happening in Gaza. There is no starvation happening in Gaza." That there's evidence that Hamas is stealing the food from its own people's mouths, so to speak. So if there is starvation, the humanitarian aid, they're taking it all. And as far as bombing schools and hospitals and UNRWA headquarters...
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Carol Soto.
Hello.
A little further up, please.
Okay, here we go. Hello. First of all, I would like to support Good Cause Eviction. One of the worst moments of the past year was when one of my neighbors came to me and said, "I'm at the intersection of a number of crises. I can't pay my rent. I've fallen behind. I pay something every month, but my daughter is sick, my husband's on disability." And she was at the intersection of two horrible things, one being the medical system that was not helping her and being the sole provider for a family that was unable to stay in their apartment, and she eventually had to leave. And so I feel that this woman really needed a lot more chances, and that's not the only story in Kingston. There's many, many of them, and a very good bill has been brought in front of you, and I really hope that you support it. On the subject of Zionism, I have to say that I think that it is the purview of this room. I think that every citizen of the United States needs to weigh in on something like this. I think that, that... I remember standing in Yankee Stadium when Nelson Mandela was freed, and it was a feeling that we, everybody, every revolutionary in South Africa, every person that had gone to their city council and asked to divest, every group of citizens that had come together had made a difference in the world. And if we can make any small difference in a place that most of the world concedes is committing genocide, that is a settler colony, that the people are starving and suffering in a way that is unimaginable, then we should step up and do it. So please support this resolution.
Next speaker, please. Mary Alice. Please state your name and address, your last name.
If you can't pronounce my last name, it's me. Mary Alice Schleuderer. I live in Ward 6. My children grew up here, went through schools. I have three grandchildren in the school here. As an RN, we have a phrase called scope of practice, and sometimes we're asked to do things that are not within our scope of practice. And I think that's what many in this group are asking you to do. Make a resolution on something that is not local. You're City of Kingston alderpeople. You are not federal or state legislators. I think that the purview is wrong. I think we're taking up so many hours of your time bringing this forward over and over that I am asking you to take a final vote, to kill it, not table the resolution, but totally kill the resolution because it's not appropriate for you. And since others brought up antisemitism, and they don't think that this is divisive, there is clearly antisemitism brewing and getting worse right here in Kingston. I have three children in this school district. Two of them have been directly attacked by anti-Semitic comments, comments telling them that their relatives should have died so that they should be dead too. This has involved students, a teacher, and an administrator. So yes, I'm sorry, but there is rising antisemitism, and I think this is just fueling that. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Merle.
Yes.
You have messy handwriting, Merle. You have messy handwriting, so we didn't know it was you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Okay, I just want to say a few things. First of all, no one in this room is my enemy, and I introduced myself to people and smiled when I walked in. This is not personal. Anybody here hates me. I don't hate them. I hope. I do have a few things to say, though. I will say that never before in my life, in my 40 years of being in Kingston and really trying to make a difference, for those who don't know me, when I first came here, I opened and started the Hudson Valley AIDS Alliance. From there, I went on to be on the Board of Family of Woodstock for 13 years, then on the Board of the Ulster County SPCA for eight years. I was awarded the top honor for Ulster Democratic Women and Woman of the Year by the YWCA, where I was almost also on the board. I opened a soup kitchen, the first full-time soup kitchen in Kingston almost 40 years ago at the Clinton Avenue United Methodist Church. I now work trying to help people's animals mostly at a rehabilitation center in Kingston where they can't afford their animals. I have devoted my life to this community, probably for longer than many of you people are alive. I have never in my life felt antisemitism and hatred like I did tonight in this room. I'm sorry, I don't want to start crying, but two different people said to me, and I'm sure they meant well. One stood at the podium and said, "Oh, I love Jewish people." And another person I introduced myself to said, "Oh, I really like Jewish people." Now, I ask all of you, if I were a person of color, and somebody looked at me and said, "Oh, I like black people," would I be offended? Yes. Am I offended by those remarks? Yes, because it means that you don't see me as a human being, you see me as a Jew. I grew up in a household where I sat with aunts and uncles and grandparents at tables who had numbers on their arms, and I feel I'm scared that another, something like the Holocaust might be coming. I don't want to leave this community, and I don't want to not do my best for it.
30 seconds.
Okay. The other issue is, I see there are protesters here about Israel-Hamas. I have not seen any protesters about Ukraine and Russia, Africa, Somalia. So that's why this feels particularly against Jews to me, because there are other wars that people can protest against, and they're not. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Mary Ann Parker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mary Ann Parker. I hear people here all night. I live at 14 Belvedere Street in Kingston, New York. I hear people here all night talking about peace and war and everything. I've lost five of my brothers during wartime and during times. I am the only living girl in my family right now, and we were nine siblings. So please do not talk about a war to me. It has to be a peaceful solution to a problem. But I'm here right now because of public safety in the 4th Ward in the City of Kingston. Our mayor put a warming center in 10 years ago in there, and there was another mayor before him, I mean Jimmy Setile and the different ones, but they put the warming center in. The warming center was supposed to be for the mothers, the fathers, and the children to keep warm during the wintertime. For the past nine years, it was okay. This past year, it's been hell. Nobody seems to want to go there except for the people who are in drugs and alcohol, or they want to come here and party in the town, find a place to put their bed so they can sleep. I had a man tell me, "I live in Saugadis, but I come to Kingston so that I can party down here, and then I don't have to worry about going home, because that first Presbyterian church at 80 Elmandorf Street is a great place for me to put down my bed and rest, and then I can continue." This is what the residents of the 4th Ward on the other side of Broadway are dealing with. The walkway along that side of Broadway from Elmandorf to down and all along in there, it's called the Harrowen Highway. The Harrowen Highway. I'm sure you are all aware of it. The kids call the place over their crack alley. We have two bus stops, one on Down Street at Belvedere and one on Elmandorf at Belvedere. The Belvedere Street section is like riding a roller coaster. We have more trucks running through there looking for the prostitutes to do you-know-what, but we have to tolerate it. We're the residents of the 4th Ward of the City of Kingston. I used to call it, when I was involved in politics, the containment dumping ground. And the police chief and everybody laughed at me and said, "That's so funny." No, it's not funny. It's a disgrace what's going on in the 4th Ward in the City of Kingston, and I have lived here my entire life, my entire life. And I'll tell you something, when that girl stood up and said it was a wonderful place to live, she's dead wrong. The mayor doesn't want the word out, but I'm putting it out tonight. Don't move to Kingston because your children will not be safe in the City of Kingston. And as far as the Jewish people are concerned, they're as good as anybody else in this city, and they deserve the same respect as everybody else. Mutual respect works both ways. And I thank you for your time, but Tinti needs to start doing his job and clean up the mess that has been created in Ward 4 in the City of Kingston.
Thank you. Time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mia. Mia, please state your last name and address.
Hi, my name is Mia Inoue, and I live at 318 Hasbrook Ave in Kingston. I'm really glad to hear that the Common Council is looking at a ceasefire resolution. For many months, we've been filling this room and submitting testimony to ask for a ceasefire resolution, and throughout that time, the testimony has been overwhelmingly in support of a ceasefire resolution. In the meantime, the situation in Gaza has become increasingly dire. More than 40,000 Palestinians have been killed, and last week, Israel bombed refugees who were seeking safety in Rafa with our tax money and with our bombs. I'm so sorry for the community member who lost a sister on October 7th, and I'm so sorry for the more than 40,000 Palestinians who have been killed since then. Those 40,000 people include family members and friends of our neighbors, of our loved ones, of our coworkers. We want a ceasefire because we care about humanity and because we want an end to the bloodshed, and because we know that the only possibility for a political solution to this conflict has to come after a ceasefire. We're here to ask you to please join the hundreds of American cities that have demanded a permanent ceasefire and to pass the ceasefire resolution you're looking at immediately. Please don't delay further. While we watch our tax dollars being spent on bombs that destroy other people's homes and neighborhoods, we are experiencing a historic housing crisis here in Kingston. Many of our neighbors have already been pushed out of this community, and many more are at risk of displacement by landlords who want to raise the rent as high as they can. So please also support the strongest version of the Good Cause Eviction bill that would cover the majority of Kingston tenants. The majority of Kingston tenants live in 1 to 4 unit buildings, and we need to know that they are all protected by this law. Those of us who are here in support of the ceasefire resolution and Good Cause Eviction are here because we stand for peace and safety for everyone from Kingston to Palestine. Please do your part to enact the values of this community by passing a ceasefire resolution and bypassing the strongest version of Good Cause Eviction. Thank you.
Common Council, it was another 30 minutes. Do I have a motion to extend? Motion by Renée Scott Childress, second by Drew Andrews. All in favor? Opposed? We have another 30 minutes on the clock. Next speaker, please. Naomi Dan.
Good evening. My name is Naomi Dan. I live at 147 O'Neill Street. I'm here tonight to urge the Common Council to pass the strongest possible version of Good Cause eviction to protect the majority of tenants in Kingston from displacement and egregious rent hikes. The majority of Kingston tenants, 60%, live in small buildings with 1-4 units. These are buildings that are not eligible for rent stabilization, the great policy that you passed to protect many tenants. These tenants, the ones in small buildings, are the tenants that Good Cause is designed to protect. Unfortunately, our state leaders put many exemptions into the state law that limit the reach of these bills. There's already chock full of exemptions that will mean that this bill can't reach everybody. The city of Kingston must do its best to make sure that this law can have its intended impact of preventing displacement and keeping our community whole. Please pass the version of Good Cause eviction that the Laws and Rules Committee passed last week. It exempts only small landlords who live in their buildings or who own just one rental. All tenants deserve protections against unjust eviction and unfair rent hikes, no matter who their landlord is or how many buildings they own. Finally, I urge you to listen to your conscience, not to fear, and support the ceasefire resolution. I'm Jewish, and I'm heartbroken by the way that my fellow community members have turned our own pain and persecution into appalling violence against Palestinians. What Israel is doing right now is absolutely unconscionable. The only way to save lives, Palestinian lives and Israeli lives, to stop the bombing, to bring the hostages home, and secure a lasting peace where everyone in the region can live in safety and with dignity, is for the United States to use its leverage as the largest political and financial backer of Israel to demand a ceasefire, stop sending bombs, and negotiate an end to this madness. We cannot stand by while children continue to be buried under the rubble made by bombs that our tax dollars paid for. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Margot Lordell.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Margot Lordell. I'm a resident of Kingston, Ward 5. I'm speaking tonight in support of two issues that you're currently considering. First, the Good Cause eviction law should, in my opinion, be as strong and protective of tenants as possible. It does not matter for a tenant at risk of unfair rent increases or eviction, whether their landlord owns 1, 2, 3, or 25 units. All tenants should be protected under this law. I also support a ceasefire resolution as the Israeli military massacres in the so-called designated safe zones of Rafa. About 2 million people, almost 80% of Gaza, have been displaced from their homes, and the continued lack of food, healthcare, and water has produced a full-blown famine, according to the UN. For a month, the call for an end to US support of the murder of civilians in Gaza has been clear, demanding that our resources be better spent funding education, housing, and healthcare, not bombing schools, homes, hospitals, and targeting journalists. Money which could be spent in local US communities is instead used in the ongoing displacement and genocide of Palestinians because solely they're Palestinian and to carry out the complete destruction of civilian infrastructure and life. We plead with you that you call on elected officials in Albany and Washington to sponsor and support a resolution calling for an immediate permanent ceasefire in Gaza and for an arms embargo on Israel, given Israel's use of them for war crimes, ethnic cleansing, and genocide. Those are legal human rights law term that have been recognized by international organizations. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Rabbi Romer.
Common Council, I am the Rabbi of Congregation Emmanuel of the Hudson Valley, 243 Albany Avenue here in Kingston. I hold dual citizenship as an Israeli and an American. I am profoundly concerned that this council's consideration of adopting the ceasefire resolution, as I believe that this goes beyond the scope of the critical work that this council needs to be engaged with on behalf of the Kingston community. I personally believe that there absolutely needs to be a ceasefire in Gaza. I am heartbroken and sickened by the devastation of a community and the loss of Palestinian life. I believe that there absolutely needs to be a two-state solution, dignity, safety, and self-determination, and a future for two indigenous peoples, Israeli and Palestinian. And I am offended and stupefied that the Common Council would not include a condemnation, a condemnation of the horrors of the terrorist organization Hamas that invaded a sovereign democratic country, raped, slaughtered, and abducted women, children, and civilians, including my family members and friends. By singling out one atrocity without recognizing, the profound atrocity perpetrated on the other side shows a callous and problematic position, playing into the hands of growing antisemitism in this country and around the globe, and further alienates me, members of my community, and jeopardizes our safety in this community. I would expect that you would also denounce the horrors of October 7th, denounce and the fate of Israeli, American, and other nationals who were abducted and are still being held captive in horrific conditions and dying. I would expect that if this council intends to create resolutions about world atrocities, that you create resolutions concerning the murderous warfare in Ukraine, the horrific human rights atrocities leveled against LGBTQ plus individuals in Uganda, the ethnic conflict in Manapur, the UGARs in China, mass executions of understated triocracies in Iran. This resolution is one-sided and will not bring forward a day where two people in the Middle East can live in two states with dignity and self-determination. But what it does do, it does challenge the people who are living here in Kingston and further divides the Kingston community.
Next speaker, please. Joyce Holsman-Lieblich.
Thank you, Council, for allowing me a few moments of your time to express some of my thoughts on our frustrating, challenging, and frightening times. My name is Joyce Holsman-Lieblich. I am an American Jew, and I have called the Mid-Hudson Valley, specifically Kingston and Hurley, my home for approximately 41 years. I'm a fifth-generation American on my mother's side and a second-generation American on my father's side. I will be 70 years young this summer, if I live long enough. I was taught at an early age to be civil, respectful to others, and to follow a moral compass, to help those out as privileged, and to continue educating myself and others until the day I am placed into my grave. I don't care for what I see in the world today. I'm sure that my ancestors didn't care for what they saw in their time. Now to my real point here tonight. I happen to be not much of a TV viewer. However, on Sunday evening, I did see a talk show host who made a very interesting point, and it kind of got to me. He claims to be an atheist, and I have no reason not to believe him. What he had to impart to his audience was at the heart of many individualist's deepest frustrations. The entire world needs to sit up and recognize that women comprise half of the equation and are vital beings of necessity, instead of being considered chattel, appendages, and dismissed as dirt. A fair playing field would certainly pave the way to peace. Allowing countries the right to keep heavy boots on women's a-orders, using them as reproductive machines, and covering them up as slaves is beyond acceptable in our trajectory. We are, as Bob Dylan wrote on the eve of destruction, not because Israel exists, but because the majority of the Middle Eastern nations and other misguided countries with tragic dictators have promoted bullying, pure terror, no education, no modern technology for the masses, and a mentality of non-sustainability. Why on earth do we think we have a border problem that has exploded? Any sane soul wants to get the heck out of their impoverished homeland to come to what once was considered the shining beacon, the USA. I am not a feminist. I enjoy men. Let us not be in denial, and let us make no mistake that the countries that have allowed non-democratic leaders and terrorists to create mayhem and atrocities against civilization are growing in power. It is a horrifically harsh reality and embarrassment to civilization. I concur with the talk show host.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have more comments, and this goes to anybody, if you didn't finish your comments, please send them to the Common Council via email. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Ron David Gold.
Thank you. I'm Ron David Gold. I live in Woodstock, New York, and I'm president of the Jewish Federation of Ulster County. And I want you to know that the Jewish Federation of Ulster County supports an immediate ceasefire in Gaza, immediately after the hostages are released, immediately after the people who were kidnapped and abused and paraded are released, immediately after Hamas surrenders to the IDF. I want you to know that if you support this resolution, you're supporting an organization whose charter calls for the death of all Jews. That's called, as you know, genocide, whose charter calls for the eradication of the State of Israel. As you know, that is genocide. Please keep that in mind as you consider this tonight. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Ruth Mandelbaum.
I don't have too much to add, because everybody spoke more eloquently than me, especially Rabbi Romer. This proposed resolution, I took copious notes, but it would take me more than three minutes. But I do see the part that says, "Whereas the city of Kingston recognizes that we have the ability and opportunity to help ease the pain and divisions within our community through a statement of shared understanding," clearly there is not a statement of shared understanding. This is nothing but divisive. The city should not get involved in this in any way, shape, or form. So I agree that it should be killed. However, I'm not so knowledgeable or politically savvy, and my brain doesn't hold that much anymore, but I do a lot of Googling to find things out. And so I'm just going to share with you a couple of interesting things that I sort of found along the way in my Googling, if I can find the notes, because I just think it's so interesting. If you Google the countries of the world by the dominant religions, you will find that 157 have majority Christian countries. There are 47 Muslim-majority countries, I'm sorry, 49. There are actually a couple with Buddhism, a couple with folk religion. There is one Jewish state, Israel, and if you look on a map of the world, because I don't know how many of you have, you will see this one teeny, teeny, tiny little red dot that is surrounded by all of the Muslim countries. And there are almost 2 billion Muslims in the world. There are 14 billion Jews. So all I can say is our losses have been pretty devastating. Antisemitism is on the rise. I never thought that I would feel uncomfortable in my own community, in New York State, in my own country. This is nothing but divisive. Please, wherever you stand on the issues, you have the right to peaceful protest. You have the right to write your congressman. You have the right to vote. Please, let's keep it at the city of Kingston. This has been our home for a long time. I hope to stay here. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Jen Astoros.
Hello. My name is Jen Astorius, and I'm a resident of Ward 7 in Kingston. I'm new to the area but have been trying to connect with folks who live in this community ever since moving here. Two of the biggest issues that I've spoken to numerous neighbors and community members about are the topics of housing and a ceasefire resolution. Both of these issues are, in a small way, being decided upon by the council. The first issue that is of great concern is the Good Cause eviction protections. Currently, there are far too many unhoused folks in the city that have been unable to access affordable housing. The city has not done enough to protect its residents, and there is a housing crisis happening right now, truly all over the country, but people are really feeling it hard here in Kingston. For folks who are unhoused, many are vulnerable, excuse me, for folks who are housed, many are vulnerable due to being renters who have little to no protections from the things like unsafe housing conditions, rent hikes, and no cause evictions. The Good Cause eviction prevention absolutely needs to be as strong as possible to protect folks from being evicted for no reason of their own. This measure puts forth, is not going to solve the housing issue, but it will put a protection in place for folks and help to prevent further displacing people who live here. The protection needs to be applicable to as many people as possible, the strongest version, because as people have mentioned, the majority of people who are renting are renting in units that have 1 to 4 properties. A large percentage of renters are in units that are smaller, that if the Good Cause eviction is not as strong as possible, they would not be protected. All those who live in this community and their safety of being housed is as important to protect them, not just the landlords who are seeking profits. Stop letting your community down by decreasing the protections for folks who rent. They are not the ones who need your support. Secondly, I would like to speak in support of a Kingston ceasefire resolution. Y'all have been hearing countless everyday folks come here for week after week in support of this ceasefire resolution, the same as our neighbors across the Hudson Valley who've been already passing the ceasefire resolutions. You've heard us here asking you, as elected officials, to do the bare minimum in using your collective power to voice that our community wants this genocide to end. This is impacting our residents and their family members. You've ignored us every time we come here to speak. I've been with comrades to knock on community members' doors and speak to neighbors who overwhelmingly agree that we should not be sending tax dollars to support our community. We should be sending tax dollars, keeping them here to support our community, and not funding the weapons and the continual destruction of land and lives in Palestine.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Next speaker, please. The last name is Klein.
First name is Mark.
Thank you.
So, anyway, I'm with the J-Fed, and I've dealt with a lot of legislative bodies, this one county. I've done it on the state level. Matter of fact, I even went to New, I even went to New Paul's College. I even went to New Paul's College and got a great education about how governing bodies work. And I want to talk about the law. Matter of fact, I want to make one correction. There was no resolution passed in the city of Poughkeepsie. But anyway, general law, general city law, Section 191, limits the authority of the city to regulate, manage, and control its property and local affairs. The city of Kingston and municipal corporations and its authority can only be exercised only to the extent that it has been delegated by the state. And that was affirmed in Ames versus Smoot, '98, AD 2D, 216, 471, New York State, Second D, 128, Second Department, 1983. So the main thing about this is an adoption of a resolution is beyond the power of the common counsel of this body of the city of Kingston. So it's out of line to do something like this. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, please. Ann Ames.
Assalamu alaikum. All right. Peace in the Middle East. We talked about that before. That used to be a saying back in the 70s. It's a little bit too much here. Peace in the Middle East. Oh, first of all, I want to, I don't know whose idea it was, for the mayor and the council people to have these town meetings. But whoever thought of it deserves a gold star because I think it's an excellent idea. Because I don't know if it's ever been done before. I've only been here 20 years. But I think it's the first time that this has happened. I'm not sure. But I really appreciate that. Okay. What I have here is, I'm going to be short. We all have definitions of murder that we know. We have fratricide, patricide, matricide. We have all of these definitions of murder, and we know what they are. We know what patricide is. We know what matricide is. We know what fratricide is. We need to agree on what is considered genocide. There is a UN definition of genocide. I don't know if anybody wants to accept that definition. But I think you on the common counsel have to decide for yourself what you think is genocide. What your own definition of genocide is. And when you come to that conclusion, I hope that you will be able to pass the resolution for the ceasefire. Goodness. Sometimes it's hard to believe that we are talking about the same history when it comes to Palestine and Israel. It's sort of like what's going on now in Florida about American history. It seems like people like to manipulate history now. What they feel it is and what they think it is, and it's become all blurred. It's like, come on. Are we talking about the same thing? We can't erase history because it's there. But that's another story. I just want to mention about the warming center. This is not the first time I've come into this place and we have talked about needles and all kind of other kind of stuff. There is something called addiction.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Addiction is a disease.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up.
I just want to also for people to support good cause eviction.
Your time is up.
Package to...
Your time is up. Your time is up. Next speaker, please. Lilly Thompson.
Hello. My name is Lilly Thompson, and I live in Ward 9. To keep this short and sweet, pass good cause eviction. And as a proud Jewish woman, pass a permanent ceasefire. Your votes will be remembered in history books, 40 years from now, for either the right or the wrong reasons. And I know this because I was in school once. Thank you.
We're moving to Zoom now. First speaker.
Taylor Ann Vaughn.
Next speaker, please.
Samuel Weissman.
This is inappropriate. I'm going to have you muted. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jude Anrus.
Next speaker, please.
Jim Conley.
Next speaker, please.
Diana Lopez Martinez.
Hi, good evening. My name is Diana Lopez Martinez. I live at 38 Stephon Street, and I am a community organizer with For the Many. I am here tonight to talk in support of the Good Cause Eviction legislation that passed through the committee. We need the Kingston Common Council to pass this as soon as possible in order for folks to be able to stay in their homes. Because just as I was looking today at the market, there is a one-bedroom apartment for $2,000 and asking for a $2,000 deposit. So that is $4,000 total to move into that place, and that is very absurd. I also urge you to define small landlord as those with only one unit in their portfolio in order to close a loophole that could be exploited by corporate LLCs. And small landlords who live in their buildings and up to 10 units are already exempt from the law. And so yesterday, the city of Albany made history by being the first city to opt in into good cause. And they made the right decision by closing the potential LLC hole and setting portfolios to size one. So I urge Common Council to please do it as soon as possible. And I also want to talk in support of the ceasefire resolution because I myself have three children in this school district. And I cannot imagine my children being killed. And the reason why it is in our preview to, you know, decide on this resolution is because it's our tax dollars that are being used every time there is war or genocide. And we can use that money instead for our community, for our schools, for more housing, for so many other things that our members need. And, you know, we shouldn't be given money for any war that is there. So thank you for your time, and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Andy O'Brien.
This is inappropriate. I'm having the clerk mute you. We are ending the public speaking. We're going to adjourn for five minutes.
No, she's not going to be a rabbi. She's going to be ordained as a cantor.
Oh, is she?
It's all about the music.
Hey, it's good.
We have our rabbis retiring. We have a new one.
Right, I heard that.
And she's going to continue there. She's in school full-time to be ordained as a musician.
We really don't want to do this every month, do we?
I know. It's right to her veins. So she went to Peabody. She wanted to go for a walk. She's really, you know, she loves opera. She doesn't like the live spot. To get going, you have to audition on season. The season already said, who is your season? The third season. She's like, I don't have a plan. No, we can't help the following. Yeah, they had a big wedding. It was like, they did, oh, I think. She wanted to go, but it was still off. So it was in my living room. At the hospital bed, it was rather, right? Yeah, but yeah, she's really falling into it. She came in kicking and screaming, but she loves it. I know. My daughter went to school with her son. Yeah. Well, Erica was the song that we should get.
These guys are going to reconvene in both? I don't think so.
Councilmembers, we're going to start in a minute, so if you could find your seats. So, oh, yeah, you can't be here, but I could, if you had a question. All right, councilmembers, if you could find your seats, we're going to start. We're going to start in 90 seconds.
There will not be a vote tonight. I want you to know.
Okay, because I thought after that, that that was the end.
Apparently, one of them was. They're, you know, they have the anonymity.
I have to tell you.
We're now back in session, picking up right where we left off. We had ended our last 30-minute session of public speaking. Is there a motion to extend another 30 minutes from the council? Michelle Hirsch.
Madam President, I am not one to want to end public comment or chill any voices, but I think that in light of what just happened on Zoom, that we need to apply an equal rule to ending public comment now. Thank you. I want to just encourage anyone that still has something left to say to please send in your public comments to the city clerk. Thank you.
So since we're not extending another 30 minutes, we'll move on to our business. And if anybody who wanted to speak who didn't speak, please send your comments to emtinty@kingston-ny.gov or any of your councilmembers. We're now entering into Claims and Communications. Hearing no discussion, they will be on file in the clerk's office. Can I get a motion dispensed for the second reading of the general bills and pacing? Motion by Rennie Scott Childress, second by Jeannie Edwards, all in favor. Opposed. Motion is adopted nine to zero. We now enter into the report of committees, starting with Resolution Number 83.
Resolution 83 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, opposing delivery rate increases by Central Hudson Gas and Electric Corporation.
On the question?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank my fellow colleagues for supporting this memorializing resolution opposing the 31.9% delivery rate proposed increase that is going to be going before the New York Public Service Commission. This would be very detrimental to our community members, our residents and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution 84, please.
Resolution 84 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending the approval of a 2024 transfer in the fire department in the amount of $61,390.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 85, please.
Resolution 85 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending the approval of a 2024 budget transfer in the police department in the amount of $14,625 from contingency to cover the expense of a resignation payout.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 86, please.
Resolution 86 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending the approval of a 2024 budget transfer in the police department in the amount of $36,000 to cover the expense of overages.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 87, please.
Resolution 87 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation for a water infrastructure improvement grant in the amount of $625,000 and a state revolving fund in the amount of $1,875,000 for the pump station repair and reconstruction project and to execute any and all related documents.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution 88, which is a bond ordinance, so I will ask for a long roll.
Resolution 88 of 2024. Bond ordinance dated June 4, 2024, an ordinance authorizing financing of water infrastructure improvements in and for the City of Kingston, Ulster County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $2,500,000 and authorizing the issuance of up to $2,500,000 bonds of said city to pay costs thereof. Alderman Scott Childress. Alderman Edwards. Alderman Mickens. Alderman Dennison. Alderman Andrews.
Aye.
Alderman Shabbat.
Yes.
Alderman Hirsch.
Yes.
Alderman Pastie. Alderman Tierney.
Yes.
Bond passes nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 89, please.
Resolution 89 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2024 fire department budget.
On the question? Was that Hans?
Yes.
Alderman Rennie Scott Childress.
Thank you. I would like to note that this is a grant that's come to us that is providing a bonus, if you will, to the members of our fire department for the outstanding job that they've done. And I would like to join with all of my fellow members of the council here to express our great gratitude for the work that they do and the way that they go about their business with such aplomb.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 90, please.
Resolution 90 of 2024. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to the traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, removing no parking on Fair Street.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 91, please.
Resolution 91 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation for a certified local government grant in the amount of $15,000 to hire a consultant to elevate the proposed Wilbur Historic District to the State and National Register of Historic Places and to execute any and all related documents.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution 92, please.
Resolution 92 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, recommending approval for modifications to the 2024 planning department budget.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 93, please.
Resolution 93 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, appointing Emily Hauser to the Ulster County Environmental Management Council to represent the City of Kingston.
On the question? On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 94, please.
Resolution 94 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting a secret determination of significance for proposed Local Law Number 8 of 2024, proposed Local Law Number 9 of 2024, and proposed Local Law 10 of 2024, negative declaration.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 95, please.
Resolution 95 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending the allocation of solar panel projects in the 2023 capital plan.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution 96, please.
Resolution 96 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, in support of state legislation for speed cameras in school zones.
On the question? Alderman, Rennie Scott Childress?
Thank you, Madam President. I stand in favor of this resolution. I think that anything we can do to protect our children as they go to and from school is vital to do. I understand this is a pilot program, and I hope that the state will come through quickly and fairly so that we can institute this to add another way of protecting our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no one further, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 97, please.
Resolution 97 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, approving the MOA between the City of Kingston and KPFFA Local 461, adding additional EMS ambulance services to the Fire Department.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution 98, please.
Resolution 98 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting a fee schedule for the City of Kingston's ambulance billing system.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 99, please.
Resolution 99 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, approving the MOA between the City of Kingston and CSEA Local 1000, ASF-CME, AFL-CIO, Kingston City Unit 8951, Ulster County Local 856.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. Moving to Resolution 100, please.
Resolution 100 of 2024. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing, authorization to expend funds in the first instance and set up a capital account for the First Avenue Project.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution is adopted nine to zero. We now have a number of local laws. They are all the first reading, so there's no vote. First reading of Local Law Number 5, please.
Local Law 5 of 2024 of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, prohibiting eviction without good cause.
Any, okay, sorry, first reading. First reading of Local Law Number 6?
Local Law 6 of 2024 of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, opting into 421-P real property law tax exemption for the creation of accessory dwelling units.
Moving to first reading of Local Law Number 7?
Local Law 7 of 2024 of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting the 421 property tax exemption for the creation of new eligible housing units.
Alderman Mickens? Can you speak into your microphone so people, thank you.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Madam President. In consideration of the possible long-term impact Local Law 7 may exert on the city's existing and future residential and commercial tax base and the intended municipal-wide use of limited land resources, the impact on new affordable residential housing development, as well as the impact on municipal services that may result, therefore, I move that the council return the matter to committee to allow for thoughtful deliberation and a more comprehensive review.
There's a motion on the floor to send back to committee. Is there a second? Second by Jeannie Edwards. Anyone want to discuss? So I will call for the vote. All in favor to send it back to committee?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, Local Law Number 8 is, will be sent back to committee. I'm sorry, 7. Yep. Moving to the first reading of Local Law 8, please.
Local Law 8 of 2024 of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, establishing a community preservation plan fund and creating a community preservation fund advisory board as authorized by General Municipal Law Section 6-S for the purpose of preserving natural, scenic, historic, and open space resources within the city.
Alderman Bob Dennison?
I just want to point out that this is the first step in this process and that will lead to a public referendum and, which will be required before we establish the fund. I think, I just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alrighty, so moving to first reading of Local Law Number 9, please.
Local Law 9 of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting a community preservation project plan.
Moving to the first reading of Local Law Number 10?
Local Law 10 of 2024 of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, to protect the water quality of the City of Kingston's drinking water, preserve working farms, establish parks and recreational areas, protect historic resources and natural areas by creating a 1 and 1/4% real estate transfer tax on the conveyance of interest in real property in the city, with revenues from this tax to be deposited in the City of Kingston Community Preservation Fund, which may be matched by state and federal funding and which will require full public disclosure of all spending.
All right, that concludes our communications. It also concludes our council meeting. But before we adjourn, does anyone have anything? Alderman, Rennie Scott Childress?
Yes, thank you. I want to close tonight's meeting in honor of Al Spada. Al Spada was a giant figure in local politics. He was the child of immigrants from Italy, the youngest of eight children, which is probably where he learned his tenacity. He attended Kingston schools, even though he was born in Glasgow, he had the good sense to move here as a young child, convincing his family that it was the best thing to do. He graduated from the District of Columbia High School in Washington, DC. He was a veteran of the US Air Force, serving in the Korean conflict, and achieved the rank of Chief of Staff. He was the chief of the Air Force Supply Depot while stationed in Japan. Throughout his service, he was recognized by his superiors for outstanding performance and organizational skills, as well as his leadership qualities. When he came back to Kingston, to Ulster County, he began as his, as a legislative assistant to Assemblyman Kenneth L. Wilson, and then Senator E. Ogden Bush, and then was deputy county clerk of Ulster County in 1962. Early in his career, he was a third ward committee alderman, good sense again, the best ward in the city, organizer of the Ulster County Young Republican Club. He was elected to the office of the county clerk in 1966 at the age of 34, the youngest county clerk in New York State at the time. Subsequently, he was re-elected, an amazing 11 times, by the residents of Ulster County. He served in this capacity for 39 years, running unopposed since 1981, the longest-serving county public servant, second only to the historic George Clinton, and he retired in 2005. Al was steadfastly dedicated to serving the people of Ulster County. He served on the Board of Benedictine Hospital, the Kingston Hospital, Key Bank, New York State Advisory of Public, Advisory Board of Public Works. He served as a commissioner for the New York State Sports Authority, chairman of the Kingston Housing Authority, a member of the Heritage Advisory Council, Community Chest, VFW American Legion, and Boy Scouts of America. He served in many other such capacities. He was an amazing figure in the history of this county. His presence, his tenacity, his intelligence, and his friendship stretched deep into the county and will be long remembered. I have one other one too. Unfortunately, I can't find it at the moment. So I would like to close the meeting in honor of Richard McCormick, who was predeceased by his wife. Richard was a longtime gym teacher here in Kingston High School. Thousands and thousands of kids went through his classes and learned all about how to take care of their bodies and their, their selves through his classes. In later life, he became a key member of the Kingston Rowing Club, was quite an amazing person, deep into his 90s as well. He will be sorely missed by the people in this city.
Thank you, Rennie. Anyone else? Hearing no one else, then I will call for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Michael Tierney, second by Drew Andrews. All in favor? Anyone opposed? And that concludes our council meeting at 10:01 before, we, and we hereby stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, July 2, 2024, at 7:30 PM.